General law thirty A, section twenty. The open meeting session portion of this meeting will be held remotely in online conference mode hosts on zoom.com. And members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcasted live on Comcast channel twelve. And it'll also be reviewed via live stream on WHOHCA and will subsequently be broadcasted on youtube.com. I'd like to open it, open the meeting with the pledge of allegiance, please, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. And as customary, I'd like to have a moment of silence and and your thoughts, please keep the family of Jan Herkey and your thoughts. She was a teacher for Whitman Hansen and she had, she passed away recently. Thank you very much. I'd like approval of Bill and Perrow warrants, please bear emotion.
So moved in.
There are second.
Second ready.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Justin?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. I need a motion to accept correspondence in the read file. Very emotion.
So moved Kyle.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, Justin?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. I need a motion to of the approval of meeting minutes for open session on February twenty third, twenty twenty one. Very emotion.
So moved.
Second?
Second, Brian.
Any discussion on it? Seeing none, Justin?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, at this time, before we continue with our meeting, what I'd like to do is make the announcement that I am passing the gavel back to Kyle Kowalski, who was our chairman, who took a period of time off and now he's ready to come back. I was acting chairman for a few months, Kyle's back and I am passing the gavel back to Kyle and he is now chairman and I'll stay as vice chairman. You're back, Kyle.
Thank, thank you very much and I, I did bring the gavel with me. The gavel that I brought home from Texas a number of years ago, made by prisoners in a Texas prison. It's that Texas gavel, so be careful, guys, because that's heavy when you use it. Dan, I want to thank you a lot for taking care of me. For that time when I, I felt like I fulfilled all the duties of chair because of, well, because of COVID and its relationship to my health and
Well, welcome back.
I want to thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is a presentation on the proposed debt by the South Shore Votex Superintendent Dr. Hickey. Dr. Hickey here.
I am admitting him right now.
Okay.
He's connecting to audio. I've enabled participants to share screens, so Dr. Hickey, if there's anything you'd like to put up, lead the way.
Do it.
Okay, welcome Dr. Hickey. And Mr. Coffin, I assume.
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. Perfect timing.
Yep.
Great, give me just a second.
Tom, just to let you know, I pass the gavel back to Kyle. He is now back being chairman and I invite you.
Very good. Thank you for the update.
Yep.
Okay. So thanks for thanks for taking some time to, to allow me to unpack along with Jim, the debt authorization article we have. I, I sent some information in advance. I'll try to just hit the highlights and be happy to field questions at any point, so please don't feel as though if it, if it's, if it's good for your thought process that you want to ask an immediate question, no worries, I'd be happy to stop. So we have been, we've been talking for several years about the need for us to maintain the building that we have and and I, I know that that starts with the support of our eight communities through the annual budgeting process. So my first slide is just a, a quick overview of the current budget situation. And then I'll get right into the debt authorization article. So our enrollment from Whitman has remained the same from fiscal twenty one, in fiscal twenty one. The budget we're presenting this year has no debt in it. Our previous debt project rolled off at the, at the end of the year with some small amount of interest for fiscal twenty one. So there's no debt in fiscal twenty two and nothing that I speak about tonight has any impact on the fiscal twenty two budget. We're looking at an assessment increase of about 1.7% or a little over $27,000. Of that, of that assessment number, the 1.65 million, about 221,000 is set aside for capital and I'll be referring back to that number a couple of times to try to put that in context. There is funding available, as you may be aware, through some, some COVID money, S R two money, which if it does become available, we'll be able to apply it to our local community assessments. So I see the opportunity for perhaps that slight increase to basically be absorbed by S R two funds, but we would start with this number going to town meeting. And then, once that program, once we've applied for the grant, it, it may turn up in a, a lower assessment on one of the payments that the towns make. So maybe by the end of the year, we'd look back at this and say it's, it's a, almost a zero for, for fiscal twenty two, but for now, there's a slight increase. Terms of the debt authorization article, the backstory to this is that we have, we've been a very patient and annual applicant to the Mass School Building Authority since 2015, telling a story about an aging building, a well-maintained aging building and the need for more space. We are, we await their decision, hopefully in their April board meeting, whether we would be invited. But the premise here is that we've got to start to prepare to take matters into our own hands because we've got some larger capital projects coming up that we cannot justify or afford to bring to you in one budget cycle. In fiscal twenty two, we've got a window project that's about $700,000. That's probably the last big capital project that we can absorb within one, within one annual budget cycle. So as we look forward to look ahead to borrowing, we're looking at an idea that has us seeking authorization, but phasing in the borrowing over a six-year period using a combination of bond anticipation notes, interest only, and then bonding. The article calls for 18.9 million, of which Whitman's share would be 24.75%. And that's drawn from the regional agreement, which has, has us do a three-year look back whenever, from the year in which the debt is authorized. Interestingly enough, and I'll talk about this in a couple of, a couple of slides, that the capital money that we ask for each year has been increasing and a lot of it has been devoted to infrastructure. So while it's not going to be entirely this way, a good portion of future capital lines will essentially be shifted over into this debt service classification. So I would envision a year from now coming back to our town saying, here's our budget, here's the debt service, this is what we borrowed in phase one, but our capital needs will be much lower because they will probably be more limiting in scope to say a vehicle or a piece of vocational equipment rather than money for building infrastructure. And we ultimately recognize that whatever debt authorization idea we have or whatever phase in we have, we only bring our towns one number to town meeting. There isn't a separate number somewhere else for capital items. So we have the responsibility of bringing a single number that includes capital and operating expenses. And so to be super aggressive with borrowing and balloon our debt service could impact our ability to get a budget passed, could impact our ability to, to, to fund the operating side of the budget, which is obviously an essential part of the budget. So we're definitely mindful of that. Where did we come up with this premise? It really started several years ago when we had an engineering firm help us with a master facilities plan. And they identified a series of recommendations. I won't read the whole slide to you, but the recommendations also included what we already knew to be true. It's nice to hear it from someone else, though, that based on some MSBA standards, we're in need of more space. So this debt authorization will attempt to address the infrastructure improvements and a portion of the new space needs that, that we believe the school has. This is in, in, in real, in real terms here, these are the kind of the general classifications of projects that we might phase in over the next five years. So again, I won't read the slide to you, but this is coming straight from our plan by chunking it over five years, putting the high priority items first and moving some of the items to the fifth year. Part of the strategy is, and, and it bears repeating, is that if MSBA does invite us to join their, their core program, we would have to, we would have to call a timeout and we'd have to see where we are with these projects because the minute that we can have MSBA subsidize some of these expenses, we must take advantage of that. So we have to proceed forward. We can't bank on it, but we can be strategic as to which projects we put first. And way that we arrived at this number, essentially taking the recommendations that we got back in 2018, adjusting them for inflation, adding in soft costs for the projects that would require an OPM or engineering or some construction contingency, adding in an undermarket $325 a square foot for some new space. And our engineers advised us that our, our students in our construction programs could build portions of these additions. So I'm imagining we get outside contractors to do the concrete and the steel, but our carpentry and HVAC and electrical and welding programs could do a lot of the work internally. And that's, so that's win-win for the curriculum and certainly for the budget. And then we backed out, we backed out some costs, that window project, we wouldn't include because we're going to try to do that in fiscal twenty two. And we were able to cut out over $900,000 of projected electrical costs that, again, we think that our students and instructors can, can handle over the scope of this, over the scope of these projects. Here are some more numbers for you. We're going to eventually, the next few slides will get to what, where Whitman fits into all of this, remembering that 24.75% in terms of the share. So this is what it would look like. If we took those projects and we phased them in and we borrowed over this time period, the first couple of phases would be bond anticipation notes. And we used, and we, we definitely are using a higher interest rate. We're doing that deliberately, even though municipal rates are lower right now. We want to take the long approach, that they won't always be this low, so we want to use numbers, we want to use factors and percentages that will, will aren't teaser rates in the short term, because we don't know what they'll be in the long term. So imagine us going through the process. We get this authorization hopefully at our eight town meetings and we begin the process. A couple of years of bond anticipation notes. In year three, we would borrow an additional million for the third phase and then we'd go to, and then we'd bond. The first bond would be for 11 million. We'd continue in phases four, five and six, again, two years of bond anticipation notes. And then we would have a second bond. Again, this would all take place based on each project's cost certainly. And also it would depend on whether we have a future with MSBA, but at least we have a roadmap in terms of costs. And now we apply that same matrix to Whitman's share. So I'll remind you that Whitman's share of capital and debt, if I were to combine that, is 221,550. I just wanted to keep that in perspective. So if you were to unpack these numbers from fiscal twenty three to twenty eight, you would see what Whitman's share would be. That is not on top of the amount of capital we have in fiscal twenty two. That's with, as I said, some of those capital dollars sliding over to debt. One of the biggest jumps would come near the end of this six-year, this phase in here, twenty seven to twenty eight. And we're in the, and Jim can speak to this at, at, at some point very soon, that we're still talking with some financial advisors about the possibility of, you know, of having let level debt service payments, which might help to lower that number, but we're looking for equal principal repayment. So some, again, with some of these numbers, we're not going to the lowest possible rates right now, but there definitely is some flexibility in how we structure this debt. But this is the current, this is our current thinking. This is our current model that we're, that we're working with. Now, having gone several years ahead, I just want to bring you back a little bit, again, going back to that capital number. And I just wanted to show you how the capital and debt relationship has changed going back five or six years. You can see the blue showing how our capital costs have steadily increased. And the red was the debt from an old roof and window project that you can see has rolled off. This fiscal year, there's a very small amount of interest. And so now in fiscal twenty two's budget, again, no impact on the debt authorization, but that's the amount of the share that we have for capital. So with that in mind, I wanted to create, again, if, if I were in your position or anyone evaluating the project, I'd want to try to get a sense of where my community might fall in this. So this is a pretty busy slide and it is hypothetical, but I hope it's, I hope it provides an illustration for you. So what I did was I said to myself, if we can get this debt authorization and really take care of infrastructure, that will be great news. Those are the cascading red numbers where the high watermark you'll see is fiscal twenty eight. And then you'll see the debt start to reduce as we approach fiscal forty four, when the first bond drops off. And then the second bond drops off in fiscal forty seven. The blue number is an acknowledgement that even though a lot of the capital will go towards infrastructure and eventually move to debt, that there will be a need to replace other capital items and I don't need to tell you folks all about what it is to review capital matrix and, and priorities. So I made up a scenario where I said, I'm going to pretend that we're going to need $150,000 of capital for vocational equipment and for vehicles and for non-building items. And I pretended that each year that, what would that $150,000 cost Whitman from fiscal twenty three down the line? So I just escalated that by three percent. And I pretended also that Whitman's share of the school would remain the same. It's highly unlikely. Capital, unlike debt, capital is a rolling three-year average. So that 24.75% could certainly change. So I just wanted to provide a visual. There's no real math to do. It's more of a sense or a feeling that if we still had modest capital needs over time and built those into the budget and coupled that with debt, my sense is by the time we get to fiscal twenty six and twenty seven, I'm looking around here and I'm saying, okay, we're approaching the second bond. Now, we're still in the ballpark of where we might have had with capital in fiscal twenty two, but we're going to know a lot more about the, the, the scope and the speed of these projects, our relationship with MSBA, to know if we're going to get to this point. But the key is going to be, like I said earlier, with each year that we bring a budget, we need to make sure that we're doing accurate forecasting and that we're communicating with our towns. Because there isn't a town in our district that would want to see our operating budget underfunded, but nobody wants a surprise either. So this is, for me, this slide just helped me paint a bit of a picture as to what things might look like. This is, again, it's all, it's all conjecture on my part. The remaining part of the, the presentation, which I'll, will, we can certainly make available and we'll be putting additional resources on our school website, links to our master plan, links to some informational resources on the debt authorization, a deeper dive into the fiscal twenty two budget, as well as some background on how the statutory process works. I don't need to tell our friends in Whitman and Hanson about regional, you know, regional school districts, but the statute is exactly the same for us. Our committee would not vote on this without being very sensitive to when our eight towns are having their town meetings because a sixty-day clock starts ticking once our school committee takes a vote on, on, on seeking this debt authorization. So we're delaying this vote until the end of March or early April, so we can capture Situance Town Meeting on April twelfth and Abington and Cohasset's Town Meeting on May twenty fourth and three hundred other town meetings on the first Monday of May. I'm pretty sure that, that's what it feels like anyway. And that's the, that's kind of the backstory of how we're pursuing this following the statute. This is another visual that will just show a different, a different look at what we're trying to accomplish under the umbrella of these, this authorization, the types of work we would need to undertake. The article language, which you've already had provided to you, but this would be the article language we'd be seeking in the warrant. And then for those unfamiliar with our school or unfamiliar with why would be applying to MSBA, can't you take no for an answer? Can't you take a hint? These are the highlights that we would be sharing with interested parties that talk about parts of our school that need to be renovated. And on this slide here, the, the roof project on our 1992 addition in the lower left corner, that would be one of our first projects we'd hopefully undertake in fiscal, in fiscal twenty three. Before, I, thanks for, thanks for your attention on that. And I'd like to give Jim an opportunity. Jim, if you'd like to speak to anything on any of the financial slides I could loop back to and we could field questions, whatever the committee wishes.
No, I think you did a great job, Tom. Again, we've, we've done this presentation a couple of times. We've, we've talked to Abington, we've, we've talked to Situate. I've actually met with the town accountant and the town treasurer over in Abington because they just recently did their school. So we went over the, the whole, the, the bond anticipation notes and the bonding and the timing and trying to figure out what, what the best process and what best information to supply the towns. The difference between the, the first couple of years on the, the, the slide that goes sideways and so forth. And then we need to give a round of applause for Tom and his graph making skills, by the way. So he's, he's fabulous with the graph making stuff. The bands are only, you, you only pay interest only on the bands, the, the bond anticipation notes. So that's why in twenty three and twenty, at twenty four and twenty five, there's, there's such a small amount of debt that's actually going to be on the books for, for the member towns because we're just, we're just paying interest on, on the bonds. And then once we, once we get into phase three where we actually bond, that's when we start doing the principal. And again, the, the debt that just came off our books was a a ten-year note for, for the current, the, the old 1962 wing. We did the windows and the roof here back about, you know, back in 2010. And that was a, a flat $115,000 of principal, you know, every year. So it started just like on fiscal twenty five at the nine twenty five that's in the middle of the screen. That's the big year because that's the most interest in the, in the, the standard principal. And then it declines all the way down to the, for the twenty years. So and again, we've been dealing with Laurie Lombard, who's one of the mavens over there at Unibank. She was with Eastern Bank for many years. We have Bond Council who does most of the bond stuff around these parts. And so we're, we've got a team together of, of very strong people. And again, we could do, we could do the bonds as a mortgage, sort of like your home mortgage where we, we have a fixed payment and you know, it's stretched the same, it's the same monthly payment for the, for the whole twenty years. Again, there's pluses and minuses to both. And again, we will, we'll do what's best in the interest of the, of the towns. And again, as you know, Thomas mentioned, we've been very conservative. This year's budget's only going up 1.89%. I think the, the, the building is managed very well. And again, the, the, the extra cost, when you look at Whitman, and again, the whole big thing about the capital cost is this year's capital is $895,000, which includes over $700,000 for windows in our old, in our, in 1992 section. So, and then when you look back at our capital projects over the, the last three, four years, they've all been building related. It's, we're not buying pickup trucks for the maintenance staff. We're not buying bobcats and so forth, where we're, we're pretty much keeping the building in shape. Tom and the staff has done a tremendous job getting grants whenever the state asks, you know, pretty much has a grant opportunity. We're applying. We've gotten over probably $3 million in, in equipment, vocational equipment over the last six, seven years through, through the opportunity through state grants. So we're managing it well. We're always looking for other, other aspects. Again, there's a lot of, we, a lot of unknowns here. We were using a 3.5% interest rate. Situate on our meeting with them, they just refinanced a bunch of notes for less than one half of 1%. So we know that in our bands, we'll probably be in the 1% range, if not a little bit lower if we went to borrow today. So we understand that the interest rate is high, but again, we don't want any surprises. And we want to show the, the full scope of, of what our, what the future costs will be. So yeah, we just, again, throwing it out there and any questions you, you, ladies and gentlemen, might have, we're free to answer, so.
Hey, does anyone on the board have a question? Or Lincoln, would you like to, to chime in?
Um, no, I, I, I think I, I just, I want to thank Superintendent Hickey and, and Jim for coming. And, you know, I, I think I want to make sure that the board had a clear understanding of what this is about. So, so nothing else to add at this time. Thank you.
Are we looking for a, a vote tonight to put this on the, on the town meeting?
So, so you, you certainly could vote tonight to add it to the warrant. Or you could wait, you know, at, at the next meeting, I intend to have a full slate of what's requested, but you certainly could tonight if you wanted to.
All right. So up, up to the board then. I'd be perfectly, perfectly willing to wait until Lincoln has his, his, you know, the fuller report on the budget. I don't, whatever you guys want.
As I, if I may, Kyle, I think maybe if we wait until we see what's on the full agenda and then we add, we're going to add, we're going to put it on it anyway. But I do, I do understand that what Tom is trying to do is the fact that this needs to be a separate article from the budget meetings because of the fact that you need all eight towns to approve this capital budget. But only six, I think six out of, is it five or six out of eight towns, Tom, for the, the budget for the school?
Yes, annual budgets are, would be six out of our eight towns.
This needs, and we need eight out of eight for the capital things. But I think Tom has presented a budget that's outstanding as far as a capital budget. And remember, we're looking at a building, entire building that is looking at almost thirty years, or sixty years old. And we're looking, right, and we've already replaced the oldest pot back in the sixties, you know, that pot. Now we're looking at to do the one that was in 1992, it's going on thirty years. I mean, I think we've maintained our building maybe a little bit too good because MSBA is looking at it saying, well, you maintain the building pretty good, but it's still, the section we're looking at is going on thirty years old. And there are other schools in our district that are less than thirty years old that are being replaced completely. So I think that we've maintained and, and I think it's time that we need to replace it and grow. We need to extend the building because of the fact that our pupil numbers are going, going up higher and higher. Well, I believe we're the second oldest vocational school system in Massachusetts, right, Tom?
That's correct.
Right, so I, I wouldn't mind voting on this tonight if, if the board so chooses. Or we could wait till we get the full amount and on the on the annual town meeting, all the articles and we can vote them one at a time. So my opinion.
What, what do the rest of you think?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, I, I do have a few questions from Mr. Hickey and Mr. Coffin. Could, could I ask if, has this whole project already been submitted to MSBA or only a portion that has not been accepted to this point or seen a look?
The thing, Mr. Chairman's, Randy, we've, the, the statement of interest we've submitted is probably broader in scope than what, than what you're, you're seeing here. But I, I will say this, our, our master facilities plan is one of the artifacts that we would have submitted. So we, we've applied to the core program, which would follow the same process in terms of a, if we're invited with a feasibility study and, and then they would need to, it would be a multi-year process. So I would say that it, there's definitely an overlap, but the, the statement of interest would hopefully get the maximum subsidy we could get for all of the renovation in infrastructure improvements plus from what our engineers are suggesting, you know, maybe upwards of 40,000 square feet. This debt authorization here would not cover everything that we've, we've, we've flagged to MSBA as, as, as an identified need.
Okay, and to follow up on that, you, I did note 40,000 square feet of new space. Would that be to, with your, a plan to increase enrollment?
Yes, I think that there, I think not, not as much as I would like, but there are, there are two ways I would look at it. The, the first way is with 40,000 square feet, we should be able to increase enrollment. The, the, the second challenge, which is right on the heels of increasing the total number of kids, is making sure that we've got technical programs that have enough space to take in kids who want to major in the program. So in other words, it's one thing to make it into the school, great. It's another thing when forty freshmen want to be in electrical and there's only space for eighteen. So part of our strategy is to, we want to add space, but I also but I also think we need to reallocate some space as part of a construction project so that the programs with the biggest equipment, the strongest labor market demand and the strongest student demand are, are getting the space. We're looking, we've got, we've got two hundred and forty-two applications from our eight sending communities for a ninth grade class that'll have a projection of a hundred and sixty slots. So that does, uh, so that, so that's, that's about an eighty student difference. That's a little higher than usual. Um, again, that's, we don't know how many of those, when we start offering kids admission, we wait for them to say yes or no, and then we continue to accept. So the most accurate time to, to, for me to answer a question about a waiting list or real demand, for me really falls at the end of the process in all fairness, after, after we know who has said yes, the class fills and then what's left. But we generally see a modest waiting list each year.
All right. And, and just to follow back to my original question, so what, I, I know, uh, early on in this presentation, in the slideshow, uh, you've been applying to MSBA, whi- which is, uh, I think what, close to a forty-two percent reimbursement? Or maybe even higher?
Yes. A little, a little bit higher.
So was there any definitive statement of interest on any of these projects that you have listed here that you've actually been denied for?
The, the MSBA, the, the way that the statement of interest application works, they ask us to identify what our concerns are. So I guess, Randy, what I would say is all of the concerns that the, the substance of the concerns addressed here would, would over, would overlap. So there's nothing, if I understand your question, there wasn't something specific in, in, in a statement of interest that they specifically rejected or, or that maybe in the past, we've gone with just a very narrow focus. So, um, the core program allows us to address all systems issues. And, and that's what we've applied to versus say the accelerated repair program, which focuses on roof window boiler projects.
Right. Whi- which seems to, I mean, the roof project is close to what, seven million?
We're projecting the, uh, within the seven, with the, the seven million, part of that would be a roof project, which we're projecting at about one point eight million. The challenge with the MSBA's two programs, and, and this is unfortunate, is that if you do go into the accelerated repair pipeline, your application for the core program is not given, uh, I'll just say it's not given as serious consideration. And that's too bad because they want districts to maintain their buildings. But on the other hand, they, they should also give districts the ability to do both. That's just my opinion. So the core program will allow us to address all of these needs. That's, that's the hope.
And, and my last question would be about addressing, uh, I, I guess, uh, how this would be addressed by MSBA. If, if you were to, uh, achieve funding for this by the, uh, eight towns, I, I guess my, my initial, what would be MSBA's, uh, would they then still want to get involved if you have the money in the bank per se?
I bel- I believe so because this is, this is, uh, it's an authorization, uh, in my, and I've directly communicated with MSBA officials, making them fully aware of this. The reaction I get has, is actually been positive. It shows that the community's investment in the school. And it doesn't necessarily tie our hands going, going forward. So if we were invited into MSBA this spring, the very first piece of good news is that we have funds set aside in a stabilization fund to cover feasibility. We would not be coming to our towns in, in the next fiscal year asking for an operating budget, a capital budget, et cetera. We'd be able to access funds that we've been setting aside for this express purpose. So the first hurdle of, do you have funding available? Do you have the support of your community within two hundred and seventy days? In order to show that we can take the next step in the invitation process, that's good news for our communities. They would have no impact on local, on local assessments to do that. Now, if you fast forward a couple of years and we're at the point where we've got to make some decisions about projects, you're absolutely right to mention, how does something like that jive with a debt authorization? Well, in my view, the way that we would look at it is what projects have we completed by the time we're ready to do that? If we can stretch out and not complete a project because we can wrap it into MSBA, I certainly would be in favor of that. MSBA will, will not retroactively reimburse, right? Unfortunately, no extra credit for that, other than yes, you're maintaining your buildings. We're taking you seriously. But certainly this debt authorization in its, in it, the remainder of the authorization is something that I think could be revisited. Because ultimately, as we all know, when there are big construction projects, MSBA expects the communities to authorize the full amount. And then they back out the reimbursement. So I think, I think Randy, I would love to have that challenge of explaining that because we get in, because we get invited. But I definitely can see a path where authorizing this debt does not mean MSBA would say, oh, they've got the money, no problem. We won't consider them. Instead, they see it as a local commitment, but something that the state should share in the burden of funding. That's the, that's the clear impression I'm, I'm getting in my conversations just in the last two weeks with, with MSBA.
And, and then just my last question, uh, sorry for taking the board, uh, all the time up here. And, and this is my, my, really my, my concern with this is I know you, you have a very detailed timeline listed out here, which obviously by twenty twenty-seven i- is a uh, definitely a, a tremendous impact on, on the town of Whitman's budget. Are there any guarantees or can any guarantees be in place that a, a timeline is followed as to, I know you, your board may change. It may be, we need to get this project done now. We have the money and all of a sudden, this schedule has really ramped up pace and now unexpectedly, the, our town of Whitman, uh, could be on the hook for a considerable amount of money i- within a couple of months.
Yeah, we would, uh, the way that I, the way that I see that scenario is, um, we have to bring you an annual assessment and there's got to be a debt service calculation. So for us, for us to come to our towns and say, here's your assessment for the year, that's, we only get to ask once. And so we would have to be, we would have to be mindful of that. So first of all, I wouldn't see any, I wouldn't see any surprises in that regard. The, the next scenario, and you're right to reiterate, one of the slides where I mentioned that, is that fiscal twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that if we kept this plan the same, the other piece that we have to be, we have to be wary of by doing this in phases is we've also got to go, we're got to continue to listen to our communities and see what the, the state of the union is in terms of the, the local economy. If we're not going to get a budget passed going into fiscal twenty-eight, despite our great idea of having a five-year phase and because of an economic issue, we have to be mindful of that. So does that mean maybe something gets pushed out? Or as Jim was talking about, maybe we look at a, a debt service restructuring where we maybe are making different, you know, a level debt service payment to lower that. Or, or on, on the flip side, we need to give our communities enough time to say, hey, the Voc Tech, uh, bond is coming up. We can't fit this under the levy limit. We want to be supportive. Maybe our community needs to talk about another way of funding it. That right there, goodness gracious, you don't talk about that in a couple of months in any local community either. So for me, I see the first few years as being manageable, probably under capacity. And if we are under capacity, I would want to bring to our school committee a recommendation that we, uh, that we put money into stabilization. I will say on the side, I'm happy to say that along with the money for MSBA that we have in stabilization, we have about a million, maybe Jim, you can clarify, one point one at this point. We've been putting money in stabilization for five or six years for this exact ti- for the timing of this, of this project. So that if we do end up with a phase in, we will be able to go to our committee on an annual basis and say, here's our strategy on revenue. We're going to match, we're going to, we're going to begin to draw down stabilization. I don't see us funding stabilization in the amounts we have in the last five years because we're putting our eggs into the debt service basket. If we can fund stabilization or we can, it, it would be, it would be near the end of the fiscal year, quite honestly. We're, we've, we're going to make a conscious decision. You can't be putting all this money away and then asking people to let you borrow money. So I think, I think part of what I hope would be part of the strategy is MSBA comes a knocking, we got the money covered. We've got money in stabilization that we can feed into cover. If we run into, if our towns are saying, help, we want to support you, but you've got to help to offset some of these costs. So I could envision that becoming part of the conversation a little later in this five-year phase. And that's my hope. That's the whole reason we did it. To, to have that money available to provide relief.
One of the things is that over the years, we've, we've always, we've visited the, um, the Women Finance Committee and they've, I mean, one of the, probably the best well-informed finance committees that we've, um, that we've met with over the years because there, there are questions and they're always focused on the debt because the debt always seems to be a, a high number for the women based upon the enrollment. And we're very cognizant of that. And we, we have about one point six million dollars in stabilization for design and construction aspects. Because as every year, as Tom mentioned, we, we do a submission to, um, to MSBA and, and through all the other projects throughout the state, we know that once you get the phone call that you're in, there's an expectation that the feasibility study is going to cost you anywhere from half a million to one point one million. We don't, you know, depending upon the project. So we were trying to squirrel away some money into the rainy day fund so that if, when we do get the phone call, we don't have to come back to the towns and say, oh, my God, we're going to have a million dollar deficit because we weren't planning on this. So we put that money away. And every year through the budget discussions, Dan's a great, um, ambassador for Whitman who's always questioning a lot of the budget aspects of, of where the money's going, where can we save money? And, and so forth. And again, historically, um, if you look over the last five years, the Whitman assessments haven't gone up, you know, dramatically over the years. Um, we've been able to take advantage of some low and low interest in our member towns and we've, we've, we do have, um, a lot of kids in the, in the school right now, like eighty-five kids in the school that are from out of districts. So when the, when the time comes that, you know, the, the local interest props, we do have applications from kids from Duxbury and Marshfield and, and Pembroke. And their availability to join the, join our program, um, is there over the last few years. So, um, we are happy to say that the current freshman class, I believe a hundred percent of the freshman class today came from our eight member towns because, and as Tom mentioned, there was two hundred and forty-two uh, member town applications that have been, been received. That doesn't even count the, the kids from Pembroke or Duxbury or Marshfield who have, who have applied, but there's no room for them right now. Because again, we haven't, we have enough interest in, in, you know, um, students that want to come from our member town. So, again, there's a lot of factors, I think, that from a standpoint of even just, again, I had mentioned the one point eight nine percent budget increase that we are, we are, um, concerned about the local towns and, and the budgets, especially the towns like Whitman, Rockland, Abington and Hanson, um, who are the four largest towns in our, in our district from a, from an enrollment standpoint. And we understand the, you know, the fiscal, um, concerns that they have as, and as we also concerned with the, the Hanovers, the Situates, the, the Knowles and the Cohasses as well. So it's, it's a, it's a big package. I think that as we monitor this every year, you know, if there's a year that, that is, um, Dan's brought up a couple of years, say, do, can we chop the capital or can we, how can we rearrange this because the Whitman number might be a little bit too high for whatever. Again, we can't predict the future. We don't know what the climate will be like in, in two thousand and twenty-eight, um, when the big number kicks into the budget. But we just, we, we hope that, that the trust is there that Tom and the leadership of this team and so forth would just manage things in the best interest of the towns. And I think that, I've been here about six years and I, and it's, it's, um, it's very rewarding to know that the impact of the member towns, I mean, Lincoln was over in Hanover for a little bit. So, um, that's, that's our first thing is how does it, how can we maintain, um, you know, the integrity with our local towns and we're, we're, we do the best that we can with that. So.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions from, uh, board members? Uh, Lincoln?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I, I, I just, I just want to reframe, I think it, maybe it's sort of implicit, but I just sort of want to reframe conversation a little bit more. And again, I really appreciate Dr. Hickey and Jim coming to give this presentation. And, and, and just to sort of reframe it a little bit, I, I think to sort of boil it down policy-wise and the policy decision before the town. On the one hand, you know, there's clearly, there's a sixty-year-old school that's extremely well-run and extremely well, uh, maintained. And that's, uh, put, you know, the, the Sosha Votech at a disadvantage, you know, with MSBA because it is so well, you know, so well-maintained. And, and, and obviously it, it provides, you know, a great education. And, and I, I think just the flip side of that, just to reframe it a little bit, is that first year, if in fact fiscal year twenty-five, twenty twenty-five is the first year of the big debt payment. And, um, you know, and, and the, the portion of Whitman students that are going there approximately, you know, twenty-four point seven five percent now, and you know, probably about that going forward, just as an idea of what the finances mean. A- and again, that interest rate stays at that higher rate that you folks are, you know, rightfully so conservatively estimating. You know, that, that, that chunk for Whitman, it says a point of comparison is, you know, is a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. But again, there's a lot of moving pieces of that. But I just sort of wanted to reframe the debate, just sort of, so folks have a clear understanding of, obviously there's needs there. Obviously, it's a great education there. And then here, on the other hand, is the, you know, is the possible financial impact with how, if this project progresses in a certain way. That's all. So I just want to sort of reframe the debate for the board members. That's all.
Brian?
Uh, I just want to thank, um, Tom and Jim. It was an incredible, um, presentation. I, um, I just learned so much on, um, on how you guys, uh, forecast everything. It's, it's really amazing. And you've, you've done such a great job over the years, uh, that, um, with the trades becoming much more popular now, probably now more than ever, uh, under the, the climate we're in, um, it's going to be, um, where kids are going to want to go there more than ever. And, and with Randy's pointed questions and your presentation, Whitman has got a very good snapshot of what's coming up in the not-too-distant future. So, um, I, I thank you for the, for the information because, uh, money is going to be tight, I'm, I'm sure. And, uh, to have such a great plan in place, uh, the Whitman citizens are going to have their ability to make judgments based on that presentation. So thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Justin?
I think Randy asked most of my questions. Uh, my, my biggest concern was that MSBA wasn't going to react adversely to towns approving funding ahead of time, but that was, that was covered. My only other question is, um, looking at some of the projects coming up, is there an, an opportunity to use something like, um, Esser or CARES funding for some of the ventilation? Or I don't think it was any networking related projects, but uh, a- any creative uses of, of funding available short-term that you could use to offset some of these costs?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Justin, the, um, the, the amount of Esser money we have, um, if it can, if we can hold on to it long enough, I mean, this, the, the grants roll off at a certain point. But given the scope of the project, um, I, I would say it would be, maybe it would be ornamental, you know. So in other words, I picture the nineteen sixty-two building where each classroom has a nineteen sixty-two Univent heater in it. And again, just as an example, we could have, probably have our HVAC shop go in and replace a few of them. But the, the, I think the bottom line is that Esser is another good example that we're going to be very strategic with those dollars that we have. Not going to be buying PPE three years from now. So let's use, let's use that and let's pay very careful attention, all of us will certainly will, you know, to insist that if that federal stimulus money comes to the states and it's chunked and how it's categorized, if it's vague, if it's specific, uh, you know, that we would all, all of us who are advocates for public education are going to want to lock arms and have legislative leaders, you know, carve up money in a way that's going to truly provide relief at the local level. It would be great if, if there was direct federal stimulus money that could be applied to infrastructure projects dealing with ventilation. Thank you. I can think of two point two million reasons why. That's the estimated cost of our, of upgrading our, you know, our, our ventilation project. So if we can couple that, uh, I, I can tell you a quick, quick anecdote is that in the, in the state budget that just passed, kind of late in, in December, there is a fifteen million dollar grant program to, for vocational school expansion. It doesn't focus on equipment. It doesn't focus on using the schools after hours. It's, it's actually a, the primary focus is on helping schools that are in existence to become a little bit bigger or a little bit more modern. Fifteen million dollars, we can, you know, that, that's, it's a start. But I'm paying very close attention to that grant program and, uh, have already written letters to our legislative delegation identifying the budget line saying, this has us written all over it. Before the grant criteria are published, please, please make sure that there's, make sure you spread out the money regionally or something. That, because all of those dollars could, could provide that relief. So if there, if there are no strings attached to these outside sources of revenue, then we have, we, we would have to fact, definitely we, we would factor that in. So even if it's factored in as, we use it to lower an overall budget in fiscal twenty-three. So you take it off the bottom and it provides savings across the board. We, we would do that. I don't feel in a rush to spend it on frivolous things. If we've got the ability through the parameters of the grant to spend it on, on bread and butter items like infrastructure.
Okay. And, and then, um, beyond that, I just. Okay. And, and then beyond that, I just, I appreciate the structuring of the, the debt over several years to at least give yourself a few more shots at the MSBA money. It, it's very well planned out.
Yes. Here, here's hoping.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Doctor, and, and thank you, uh, yeah, to Coughlin. As it was, as they said, it was a great presentation. Nicely performed and nicely responded to. Um, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tom. I'll see you next Wednesday.
Okay. Good night.
Next item on the agenda is the Town Administrator's Report.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I'll, of, there's a couple non-COVID items I want to mention, but I'll start with, you know, what's mostly on folks' minds, which is the continuing response to the COVID pandemic. So a few things, so the, the Congress, we are going, certainly going in the right direction as is, uh, you know, Massachusetts as a whole. So we have been, uh, for two weeks, the reporting, it, it does have us in the yellow rather than the red. So again, the yellow, um, just as, as a reminder, the yellow means 10 or more average daily cases per 100,000 in the population or a positive test rate of 5% or higher. So we are, we have been before, below four, excuse me, below 5% for two weeks in a row in the, during the reporting period. So that's great. It's below 5%. Um, and our, uh, our case average per 100,000 has been going in the right direction uh, for this week, for the reporting week, this, this past week, a 21.6 per 100,000 of population. So we're certainly going in the right direction. We're doing, uh, doing the planning and, uh, will be, ought to be complete shortly with doing the final pieces at Town Hall to keep staff and the public safe in preparation for um, the directive and the expectation of opening after being three weeks in the green. To Selectman Evans' question about will gray mean the same as green, um, that put that question into Dan Kelly, our new, uh, health agent, and he'll be getting an answer on that. But I, I think probably we'll have enough data, you know, so that we'll know that we're green rather than gray. Not enough data. As far as the response and the continuing efforts at vaccination, there's, there's sort of three things that I, that I really want to, or four things, I guess, actually that I really want to focus on. So Daniel Clancy has been continuing to do great work together with Chief Greno and the Health Department folks in coordinating all of that work, in particular vaccinations. So yesterday, um, after 911, adverse 911 communications to folks over the age of 65, or 65 and over, I should say, the, yesterday, um, there were 21 people who received uh, first vaccination. Um, and in some couple of cases, they're caretakers from, from homebound folks who are unable to get to the mass vaccination sites. So, um, so that's, so that's great news. We're able to help folks with that. Um, we have been receiving some doses, uh, you know, certainly not the volume that we'd be hoping, but we have been able to get some doses. Um, in addition, today, uh, there was a clinic at the Knights of Columbus, um, where 80 folks were able to receive a first dosage. Um, so that's certainly good news. We're continuing to do that work, to do everything we can to get vaccinations in the arms of folks who are eligible through the phases and want the vaccination. The, the, the other, last thing on vaccinations, two, two last things on vaccinations I want to mention is one, in case anyone's listening, there is a another vaccination at, uh, for those who are 55 and over who are veterans through the VA Health System. If folks are a member of the Vet, of the Veterans Administration Health, Health System, they can just, and they're 55 and over, they can just go tomorrow, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Mount Mariah Baptist Church in Brockton. So that's one other option in case we have any veterans 55 and over uh, who are part of the VA system, um, to get that, that shot if they want it. And then finally, we're working with the Housing Authority. So there is a separate state program whereby, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development through the state is trying to get doses out to folks in, particularly seniors, you know, in, in those in the appropriate phases, uh, who are living in Housing Authority buildings. To be frank, it's, it, the communication hasn't been great from the state, but certainly the town folks have been interfacing well with the Housing Authority folks in an attempt to get that program going and, um, get it operating for those folks who need it. So, so that's the direct, you know, about where we are with the vaccinations and where we are, uh, with our, our case rate on the state's color-coded system. A couple of related things that I wanted to mention to folks is, uh, and, and bring up related to COVID is the timing of town meeting. I just want to put that in the board's mind. The, the bylaws, as, as everyone, as everyone on this board knows, would indicate that our town meeting, it would be May 3rd. I'm assuming unless I hear otherwise from the board that we're going to be working towards that date and not delaying it. Uh, obviously we can, you know, we can, i- i- if, if we have an uptick in COVID, you know, or for, you know, other related reasons, we can revisit, but, but I just want to let the board know that I'm, um, moving forward with, you know, thinking about town meeting on that May 3rd unless I hear otherwise. Uh, I, I, I would say what, what I'm thinking right now is outside on May 3rd, uh, either uh, on our own, uh, memorial field next to the police station or, um, if, if, if we can figure that out or otherwise, I did speak with the superintendent, uh, the school superintendent today, and there's a possibility of doing it at the field again. But unless, again, unless I hear otherwise from the board, I'd be planning on that May 3rd date and planning on an outside town meeting with the rain date, obviously, rather than at Town Hall. But if folks feel differently, you know, please, please let me know. The, the, the other item is that I did speak with Superintendent Simonak today. And he offered, uh, which I thought was a great idea to come to the board's next meeting to discuss the regional school districts budget. And at that point, based on that May 3rd town meeting, at that point, um, the school committee's budget request would need to be, uh, is, is, would need to be certified there, there. Certification date based on the 45 days to town meeting would be March 17th. So if the board's next meeting is March 23rd, you know, I, with the board's approval, I, I'd suggest we take him up on his offer and have him come in and discuss the budget.
Good idea.
Okay.
Sounds good. And anyone have any questions of Lincoln?
Um, yeah, brief one.
Yes, yes, Justin.
So, um, uh, Lincoln, today, I believe you and I each got an email from, um, the Director of the Council on Aging regarding the Senior Workplace Program. Uh, I just wanted to put that in front of the rest of the board. That we're, we're being asked to, to consider, um, at what stage of reopening, we want to restart the senior volunteer program within the town. Just off the top of my head, it's, it's a population that tends to, to spend more vaccinated than other populations and we are resuming at least, uh, town employees working all in person, wearing masks, distanced. I think it's something worth considering, um, at a future meeting if we want to revisit authorizing that program.
Okay. Well, we could put that on, on the agenda right to either the next meeting or the meeting after. Does that make sense?
I think so.
No. If, if, if I could, Mr. Chairman, just three other quick non-COVID related items. Uh, number one is that the warrant officially closed at this moment, this past Friday. So at your next meeting, I'll have a draft warrant for your consideration with all the articles that were submitted. Secondly, uh, before this meeting, I briefly, uh, was able to attend the Department of Public Works Commissioners Meeting. And they, uh, I believe tonight, uh, will be making a, having a vote on their recommendation for what the sewer force main project will, will look like, which options would, uh, from, from them would be recommended to be on the town meeting warrant. And they, it also sounded like, uh, they were interested in, uh, you know, attending, uh, we were talking about having a meeting, um, with them, with Superintendent Smith, with this board at your next meeting, um, if the next meeting is March 23rd, to hear about the options there. Uh, it, it sounds as if a, a, uh, quorum of the commissioners might want to attend that. So what I'd suggest, if that's okay with the board, is having a quick joint meeting towards the beginning of that meeting to discuss that project. And so folks were on the same, same page about having the same information on the project.
And that'd be the same night that Superintendent Simonak would be coming to discuss the school budget?
Correct. Yeah. So I, I would probably have Superintendent Simonak, what I'd suggest is Superintendent Simonak be first and then have a joint meeting at, you know, 7:20 or whatever time with the, with the commissioners.
Might start earlier.
Or earlier. Sure.
We could start earlier too. 6:30. Whatever.
Okay. That'd be, you can work on that, Lincoln.
Just on that too, Lincoln, um, I, I know this, uh, they've presented, um, the sewer commissioners in front of the Capitol Committee quite, quite a bit, which you've sat in on. At that meeting, uh, could you possibly, possibly give an update what the Capitol Committee's take is on this as well?
I will. Yes. So they, I don't believe, actually, I, I'm sorry, before I came on, I believe that the, uh, the Capitol Committee did take a vote in support of this project, uh, but I'll confirm that. And if Capitol Committee is meeting, at, at the next meeting, I can ask for, you know, a sort of a re-up on that vote, uh, whatever.
We did vote to, um, yeah, before you joined at the town, we voted to authorize this project at a special town meeting in January.
Yep. So. And, and then finally, if I could, unrelatedly, the, there have been two recent complaints about dogs from citizens, uh, from residents in the past couple of weeks that I'm aware of. And the, um, I've directed, uh, per our bylaws, the Animal Control Officer, the Assistant Animal Control Officer to prepare, uh, report with recommendations to the board. And so then the board can receive that, those reports, those two reports and determine what further action, if any, the board wants to take from there. So that'll be coming up, uh, soon when those reports are filed.
Thank you, Lincoln. You had your hand up, Brian?
Yeah, I was just, um, a little wishful thinking. I was looking at the calendar and the town meeting date of May 3rd, that's seven weeks away. If we kept going in our downward spiral of, of the percentages, and, and we get to the three weeks in the green, could we just have it in our regular building? And not have to go with all the outside extra work? I mean, if we, in a month's time, got our numbers to where we could be, I think perhaps be able to do it in the building unless there's some reason that the Board of Health or the Fire Chief, uh, and his group don't think it's a good idea. Seven weeks.
I'm not sure that three weeks in the green means that you don't social distance inside. And that you don't work.
No, I understand that.
If you look at the capacity of our town hall with people seated six feet away from each other, it's not a lot of.
Yeah, I would be surprised if you, you got much more than a quorum. Uh, anyway, so I think, you know, possibility of being spread out all over that hall is, is, might be a good idea, but just my thought.
And just, just FYI, actually, our, uh, our, our Town Hall, uh, Facilities Person Todd, uh, actually volunteered today to me, which I, which I took him up on to take a look and figure out with six week, six feet social distancing, how many people could be at Town Hall. So I can have an answer on that and, uh, you know, just as a, as a point of information and then, you know, that the board, obviously, you know, but, but obviously I, I would certainly strongly urge us to follow the CDC guidance on, in all respects. So.
Yeah. I'm just, uh, thinking out loud, you know, if they're bringing the kids back to school by the end of, uh, April, why can't we? Just a thought.
But, but Brian, they're not bringing kids back to school and putting them next to each other either.
Well, I, I think if you look, I was talking to some of the school committee members and it might be three feet.
Well. Lincoln, you'll take care of, you'll take care of, um, CDC awareness.
A- a- absolutely. Well, we'll get it. We'll figure out what that capacity is and, and, um, you know, I have some information for the board.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a related question to that. Just trying to reach back from, from memory, uh, Lincoln, could you talk to the, um, Superintendent of, I talked to Bruce Martin about, uh, perhaps using the, it was the dump field when I was in high school. I believe there's lights um, on that field and not Memorial Field. It's now a community garden. So I'm not sure the freaking space out there, but if, if, you know, nightfall is a concern with town meeting.
Uh, good, good point.
Yeah.
I'll explore some, some options and try and get some options for the board.
Okay.
Two weeks. Yep.
Okay. Uh, anything else, uh, Lincoln?
No, thank you.
Okay. New business. Take action to rescind the appointment of former Health Inspector Alexis Andrews from the position of Board of Health Representative, South Shore Recycling Cooperative, Municipal Coordinator, Right to Know Alternate and Special Police Officer effective February 25th, 2021. Zero motion.
So moved, Dan.
So sorry, Brian.
Second item, Brian. Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Uh, Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Next item to take action to appoint Health Inspector Daniel Kelly to the position of Board of Health Representative, South Shore Recycling Cooperative for a three-year term through June 30th, 2022. Municipal Coordinator, Right to Know, Alternate and indefinite term. And Special Police Officer for a one-year term through June 30th, 2021. Fill the existing vacancies created by the retirement of Alexis Andrews. Is there a motion?
So moved, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Any discussion? Okay, Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Act on the resignation of Nicholas Fiscaldo from the position of Auxiliary Special Police Officer effective January 16th, 2021.
Motion, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Discussion. Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Uh, Daniel?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Act on the resignation of Julie Fisachi from the position of Crossing Guard Special Constable effective February 23rd, 2021.
So moved, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Discussion. Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Act on the request of Don Clerk, Clerk, Town Clerk, Don Varley to reappoint Michelle Winnett to the position of Registrar for the period April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2024.
So moved, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Any discussion? Hey, Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Weston?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Take action to appoint the Town Administrator as Mayflower Municipal Health Group Designee. Is there a motion?
So moved, Dan.
Second, Brian.
And we can name them. That would be Lincoln Heineman. Any discussion? Randy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Weston?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Take action to appoint a Town Administrator, Lincoln Heineman, as a member of the Sickleaf Bank Committee for SEIU Local 888 Library and OPEIU Local 6 Town Hall. Zero motion.
So moved.
Second, Brian.
Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Next, take action to authorize the Town Administrator to apply for grants and to sign contracts on the behalf of the town. Is there a motion?
So moved, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Is there any discussion? Okay, then, Justin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And? And I'll vote yes. Next item on the agenda is to discuss amendments to the town's Protective Zoning Bylaw, Section seven to four. Floodplain and watershed protection districts. You've received advice from. Our Counselor Peter from Murphy LaMurray. And Murphy, Lincoln, would you like to talk about this?
Sure. So. High level, the. In order for residents to have access to the National Flood Insurance Program, the insurer of last resort. For those in a flood prone area, according to the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The town needs to adopt some amended maps. From per per FEMA to allow for that. So what this article would do is. Separate our existing wetlands by law and create a new flood floodplain map. Per the per the requirement of FEMA so that our residents in these areas have access to the National Flood Insurance Program. And what the board's being asked to do now is to refer this to the Planning Board. So that the Planning Board, it starts a cycle in state law where the Planning Board needs to hold a hearing. And and a published hearing and then make a recommendation to town meeting about this zoning by law amendment. Proposed zoning by law amendment.
Do we do we need a motion to pass the information on to the planning?
Yes, I would say just to refer the proposed warrant article to the Planning Board, please.
I will make that motion, Dan.
Okay, there's Lincoln?
Second, Brian.
Any discussion of on referring that information to the Planning Board?
I have a question.
Yes.
If the planning board decides that they don't like it. What would happen then?
So what what would happen? I don't know if this would happen right away because that would be up to FEMA. And the national, ultimately, the National Flood Insurance Program. But ultimately, what FEMA is saying is that those residents. And we do have relatively few in Whitman, from what I can tell from the maps, but those residents in the new FEMA flood map area. If they could not access insurance, flood insurance in, you know, in a cost effective basis from the private market. That they would not be having flood insurance instead of having access to this program of last resort backed up by the federal government.
And and theirs is just a recommendation anyway. It would be up to town meeting, right?
Well, that's right. It would be up to town meeting. However, if if town meeting didn't adopt the map as recommended. Or as proposed by FEMA, then whomever, you know, would be in that area would not have access to this insurer of last resort.
Right, thank you.
But certainly, it's it's up to town meeting what our bylaws are, you know.
But hopefully, your question, Brian, will screw the the attention of the Planning Board to the importance of this for people who live in those areas.
Yeah, I I appreciate it.
Okay, you need a motion, right?
I think we have.
A motion?
I think we did.
I think we did it. I think we had a motion in a second. Yeah, and Brian was asking a question and a very good question to have the Planning Board think about, too. So hearing no other discussion, Brian?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Now vote yes. And the last item on the agenda is to announce the board and committee vacancies. The AAA Advisory Committee, an alternate delegate vacancy for twenty twenty two. Board of Appeals, one associate member vacancy twenty twenty two. Building Facilities and Capital Expenditures Committee, two vacancies, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Conservation Commission, one vacancy twenty twenty two, two alternate member vacancies, twenty twenty one and twenty twenty three. Economic Development Committee, one vacancy at large, twenty twenty three, one vacancy on the Planning Board, twenty twenty three. Fair Housing Committee, one vacancy, twenty twenty one. Historical Commission, one associate member vacancy, twenty twenty two. Planning Board, two vacancies, twenty twenty one. Recreation Commission, one non voting member vacancy, twenty twenty two. Whitman Cultural Council, four vacancies. Three for twenty twenty one and one for twenty twenty two. Whitman Housing Authority, one vacancy. So if anyone is interested in any of these vacancies, please contact the Selectmen's Office.
Is possible that we could put that on our website as well? Maybe anybody's. Going over there.
Could have that done, correct? Okay.
Kyle, I have a question. On like the on the building, the building facility expenditure committee, two vacancies, does that mean that. There are two two members that they are their term will be expiring. And by twenty one, twenty twenty two, or there's actually two vacancies right now?
You know, I have. I have no idea.
Two vacancies right now. I, one of those may have been filled by the school committee liaison, though, so I want to check on that.
Yeah.
But one of those vacancies is the vacancy created by me taking the selectman position when Dan.
Oh, right, yeah. And okay, and I thought we filled out with Fred, Fred.
We may have filled one of them with Fred. Yeah, I forget how large.
Might bring that up in your next meeting.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. And the just point of the. If anyone's interested in volunteering in town, the Cultural Council, I believe, is a five member committee with four vacancies, so that is probably an urgent need.
They have term limits on that particular committee by the state rules, so. They get that exhausted roost of boot, you know, they have to leave the committee after so long.
Okay, we'll put we'll put the relevant information on the on the website then, Lincoln. And. If we could check on the Building Facilities and Capital Expenditures Committee vacancy, just to make it available.
And yeah, I will definitely put these vacancies on the on the website. And I'm just looking at the current appointment list for the Building Facilities and Capital Expenditures Committee. And so there is one sort of quote unquote, you know, I guess, full vacancy. And then I believe. I believe, as as you said, Dan, I believe that Fred was appointed to fill. The Justin's appointment. Is that correct? So I believe I believe there may just be one, I believe, but I'll confirm that.
Okay. Okay, that exhausts the business for the regular meeting. Our executive, we need to go into executive session. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One A, Exception Seven. To comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law. And what we're going to be doing is reviewing and approving executive session minutes during that executive session. In accordance with, yes.
No, I, no, no, I was going to make that motion, but.
I still have to read the rest of it, Dan.
I know, I'm sorry.
In accordance with Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty, the executive session portion of the meeting will be held in an online conference mode hosted on Zoom. Dot com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. There will be no broadcast of the executive session. No broadcast of the executive session will be made. We will be coming back into. To the normal session just to just to adjourn once that's over. So, Dan, you made a motion to go into.
Yes, I did.
It was set by Brian. Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
We're in executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, Brian.
Okay. Justin?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Okay, then we are we are out.